All right, well, good evening. Welcome to our regularly scheduled meeting of Worcester City Council being held this Monday, June 16th, 2025. Tonight's meeting is in council chambers and live streamed on YouTube. And our next regularly scheduled council meeting will be Monday, September 2nd of 2025. With that, Ms. Hamilton, we please call the roll on those in council.
Mr. Abernathy.
Here.
Mr. Gaffey.
Here.
Mr. Husey.
Here.
Ms. Knappick.
Mr. Malta.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Ms. Warden.
Here.
Well, Ms. Knappick had indicated earlier today, due to some injuries that she had due to an accident, she was going to be unable to attend. Hopefully, we'll see her back in September. We do have a quorum, and the agenda will remain as presented. At this time, you please stand and join the members of council in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, council, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting?
Motion.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Husey. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, minutes are approved. Communications from the mayor, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. President, council members. I'm going to apologize in advance because I think after trying to keep things brief for the last couple of meetings, I'm going to run on, but you're going to get July and August off, so that's going to be my justification for this. First of all, I wanted to make a comment about this past weekend, particularly Saturday. We had a lot going on, there's always a lot going on downtown, but I think this Saturday was was out of the ordinary. 10:00 to noon, we had Worcester PD running a bike rodeo up the cornerstone, which was always, it was well attended, it was a great day for activities, fortunately for all involved. Noon to 3:00, Main Street ran their Kids' Day down at the library. Again, I know firsthand that that had a big crowd. I was asked to help hand out some prizes on that, was happy to do that. 2:00 to 4:00, a little overlap there, there was a scheduled public demonstration on the square that was, you know, had a large crowd. And same place, from 6:00 to 8:00, the Redemption Jazz Band was playing under the pavilion. So, and to my knowledge, we had a lot of competing events, a lot of different things going on, a lot of different crowds. I don't know that we had any incidents that, you know, were out of, that you wouldn't expect just having a lot of people in one place. I'm sure there were things that happened, but nothing out of the ordinary, which I think says a lot about our community, that, you know, we could pull that off without incident. But I also want to give credit to the people that helped make sure that goes smoothly, and I didn't time this on purpose with Shannon in the room, but Main Street had a lot to do with that event. The Chamber, I know, is involved in a lot of those things, so we've got some air here as well. A lot of volunteers, not just community members, but volunteers. And then, a lot of Worcester city employees working behind the scene to do that. PPM and Worcester Police Department being in front of it. Worcester PD is not really behind the scenes, they're obviously in uniform, on site, but try to keep a low presence, just not there to keep order, but just to be there in case something would happen, or to make things, you know, make sure everybody's safe all the time. And again, I had, there are some communities that weren't as fortunate as we were. Again, I don't know if luck has much to do with it as much as just the people we had involved. So, again, I just wanted to give everybody a shout out, and maybe put particular attention to Worcester PD for that going off as smoothly as it did. In terms of things in our last meeting, we had a meeting with the Amray team from the College of Worcester to provide some assistance with their summer project. Then Saturday, June 8th, we had a Boy Scout event here at City Hall that was coordinated with both the Commissioner's Office and the Fire Department, and they had a nice schedule of events. It was a little underattended, but you are going to reap the rewards of that in just a little bit, so I'll use that as a cliffhanger. There was a WDC event at Greystone, I think a number of people were in attendance at that. They had a panel of speakers there to talk about the economic impact of tariffs, both short term and long term, was kind of enlightening on that standpoint. The Quan Strawberry Social went off as planned that same day at Christopher Park, again, well-attended event. And then on the 11th, we had the law enforcement torch run for Special Olympics. They ran from the safety center to the square. We had four officers from Worcester PD participating. I did not see you participate, did I miss that, Scott?
I had a meeting.
Okay. But we did, Tony Lemon, I think it's a distinction, I think he might have been the oldest runner in the group, and he lived to tell about it, and he looked great, so it was nice to see that. And again, my daughter was part of the Special Olympics team that participated in that, and they had a lot of fun with that, and it's a nice event. They travel around, the person that organizes that goes from community to community to kind of organize that, and it was just our turn that day, I think. So, nice turnout. We had representatives involved also from Ohio State Patrol and the Sheriff's Office. So, it was a nice community effort, they had a nice turnout for that event. That same night, there was an outdoor concert at the Art Center, again, well-attended, the weather was beautiful, and that cooperated. The following day, we had the United Methodist Church in town, East Town Conference, this past week, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and I was asked to give greetings on Thursday afternoon when they opened their first business session, and that was well attended. Everything I heard from, the College of Worcester hosted, and everything I heard, both from the college side and from the church side, is that it was very well-run, very much enjoyed, and they're planning on being back next year. They may have a contract for next year, so glad we could do that. And I know the Main Street helped with that, I'm not sure of the Chamber, but they helped promote that, and hopefully, we got a little business downtown as a result. You're going to, this is going to be a topic that you're going to hear more about tonight and in the time to follow. There's a bunch of discussion going on right now in the State House over the state budget, and some other things related to that, property tax reform, Joel's going to talk about that in a little minute. We met on Thursday with the county commissioners, or I'm sorry, Wednesday, I guess, with the county commissioners, talked about that, because they've got a lot of the same issues that we do involved in that. The next day, we had a follow-up meeting with Representative Craig to get a little better understanding of where the process was, what her goals and what she thought the House leadership goals were with regards to some of those things. We expressed our concerns, and again, you'll hope, there'll be more, you know, stay tuned, there's more on that to come, and we'll see that happen. We also, that same day, Joel and I had, it was not a surprise visit, it was kind of scheduled, but we had Matt Fisher in the building for, I guess, really just the second time, I think. The first time I'd had a chance to talk to him, we, his wife has been doing a yeoman's work of being kind of the gatekeeper and making sure that he doesn't have too many visitors and things like that, and we haven't been able to breach that threshold, but we got him to stop by after one of his therapy sessions. And it was really great to see and talk to Matt. He's made a lot of strides since the incident, he's got ways to go, but he's very appreciative of all the support he's gotten from the community, and he's also very appreciative that how lucky he was. He says he basically caught, you know, after, you know, the incident itself came out of nowhere, so it was like almost a random event, but everything that happened subsequent to that, between him and getting down to OSU, was, he caught every break he could along the way, and he gets that, very appreciative of that. So, you know, that was good news. And then, as I mentioned, Saturday, we had a ton of things going on. Just looking ahead, over the next couple of months, things do slow down in the summer a little bit. We do have that zoning review steering committee meeting tomorrow, which is going to hopefully begin the process. I don't think there's any necessary determination that's going to wrap up tomorrow, but it's going to be the first meeting towards wrapping it up, so Vince will be running that, and we have some council members involved in that process. Wednesday, we have the bi-monthly managers meeting, the 22nd, which is that Sunday, I think. We have the Ohio National Guard Touch a Truck event, the 24th. We have the Ohio Home Builders Association meeting in Worcester. We happen to have their president in the room, and he's accepted an invitation to the local government to attend, and we appreciate that. Madison Hill Railroad Underpass, if you recall, it was shut this spring and then reopened, so for all of you that have reestablished your driving routes, beginning June 30th, it's going to be closed again for the completion of that project, it's probably going to be shut for all of July and most of August. So, now, the good news is, is we knew they were coming back, so this isn't a surprise, and hopefully, this will be a one-and-done, and once we get to the end of August, they'll go away and leave us alone for many years. Senator Houston's office has reached out, he's trying to do kind of a tour of local governments in the area, so we're trying to schedule that in August. And the last item, again, it alludes back, I'm going to turn it over to Joel at this point, involves property tax reform. That's a hot topic statewide, big impact on local governments, whether you're the county, whether you're the village, whether you're the city, whether you're school district. And that, I told Joel, I'm like, I said, that's all the farther I'm going to go with that, you can fill in on the details as well as the other things you want to touch on.
Okay. Well, we're doing our best to try to stay ahead of multiple bills that have been introduced over the last couple of months. They've received varying degrees of attention down in Columbus, you know, some have been more measured with things proposed like expanding homestead provisions, you know, increasing the amounts of those that are eligible, those kinds of things, you know, capping some valuations. The one most recently that seems to be gaining the most traction is actually completely eliminating inside millage. We think that's a bit of a response to the potential ballot initiative that, you know, maybe this year, maybe next year, that there's a group trying to get signatures on, that at least that we've heard just eliminate property taxes, period. So, there's obviously huge impact to that, not just, I mean, across the state, to their revenue, to counties, to townships, to cities. So, you know, that was one of the reasons we wanted to reach out to Representative Craig. We reached out to a couple of other people we know down there, and there's, I've been forwarding the OML bulletins, and they've been covering that to varying degrees. And a couple of those, I know in the past, I've just noted a few, a few things to look at there. The last one I sent, I think was late last week, had some, you know, had some recommendations in there, if anybody wanted to reach out to, you know, our representatives, those kinds of things. So, it's, we're just sort of watching very carefully. We don't know exactly where it'll go, you know, will it make it into the budget? We don't know. With the governor vetoed, we don't know, the online item vetoed, we don't know that yet. It would just seem like a really big and drastic change if they were to do that right now. So, we'll see, we'll see how that goes, and it seems to be going really fast as well, you know, as we've, as we've moved forward. You know, except for our reaching out, we hadn't heard from anybody down at the state to find out in the past. You know, I think the county would be, north of 20% of their budget would be that. Ours is around 9%. You know, we get about seven cents on the dollar, so obviously for the school, it would be huge. So, just for us, this last year was 3.4 million of the inside millage that we get. We have no outside millage, we have no leg, you know, that's what outside millage is, would be like a leg, and we put, like the schools would have, but it's kind of, we don't have any of all we have on the inside millage, it's just there for set for decades. So, just to give you an update there, so we are keeping an eye on that. Hopefully, there'll be some more measured proposals. I think in our meeting, you know, we didn't, we didn't argue with the fact that there needs to be some kind of tax reform, you know, with, at the state level, what that is, and which, what that entails, you know, whether that's sale of property income, we didn't really get into that, but hopefully, there's just a more measured approach to that, and some more discussion with local entities. And you'll, you'll have things like the bed tax on the, you know, on your agenda tonight. You know, those are the kind of things we can be pretty flexible with, because we have the ability, if we were to lose 3.4 million, it'd be a little more difficult to be able to do those kinds of things, so hopefully, that's not the case. So, we'll see how that goes. Obviously, you know, we've been, you have been, we've been very conservative and have a budget and those kind of things, so, you know, we'll be okay for a while, but we won't even start thinking about something like that as we move forward. I did want to point out just a couple of projects from the bi-weekly update. Bob already talked about the Royal Madison, Gross Team, gross is going to be closed as well. I think Oldman may have already been closed, I'm not sure yet, for some sewer work there that was part of the TIF there, that goes up and will serve some development there, you know, that we were hoping to facilitate. That would be one, one impact. If inside millage goes away, the TIF revenue, we are anticipating effectively goes, so that's, that would be a big deal since we already issued that number on that, that's the anticipation of revenues to pay for that, so hopefully, that does happen. Give you an update on the transit system, that's been moving really fast ever since we finalized that. We just talked to the contractor, they're already moving ahead, they're moving into the building out there, all of our vehicles are there. Kevin is organizing the labeling and wraps on those, getting that done. We're still shooting for that first week in August, if he's up there running. So, hopefully, you start to see a lot of marketing going out, since that transit is open to everybody, and there's no qualified qualifications, anything like that, it's open to everybody. So, Kevin's been really busy meeting with them, meeting with the College of Worcester and the LSC, and a lot of other entities to get them on board, so just wanted to let them know that's moving forward really fast at this point. And in addition to that, pools, I think Councilmen Myers asked about the pools, so we've gotten all of the slides in, we selected the slide manufacturer, that had to be put into the design, that final piece of the design for the pool. That's going out to bid any day now, the whole thing. I think there's, we mentioned that in our update, to go out to bid here July, maybe the first part of August, and then give them that amount of time to bid on it, and then we'll start your fall construction. That'll go all the way through, we're hoping, the goal is to be open, to be done by spring, 26 million. That's the plan right now, for our main understanding. Pickups in that? I mentioned bed tax a little bit, a couple of weeks ago, I think it was on May 30th, we had sent out a memo to council letting you know we'd gotten three applications in at that time. Any kind of Fair Board, the Alice Noble Ice Arena, and the College of Worcester, so those three we mentioned. We mentioned what they were for, what the amount they were asking for, and what percentage of the project it was. So, with the fair, in both cases, it was about, they were asking about 50%, so 25,000, 26,000 a piece, which leaves about 25,000 left, we're estimating 75,000 or so in the bed tax. So, that leaves, that left about 25,000. I think we mentioned previously in a couple of memos that the College of Worcester, they were still working, you know, the amount they requested was more than we had, so we're making every effort to pare down the project a little bit, so that we can go ahead and award them. So, a little bit, a little bit longer process, they have to, you know, they're a separate entity from the college, they have to give it to the college and work through their systems, so it's just taking a little longer for them to finalize. We didn't feel it was fair to, that the other two are ready to move forward to wait, and so hopefully, it works out well, because they have their whole season through the summer, anybody that'll be able to do any work. Hopefully, that works out, but now that's come back, you know, we'll, we'll be all set and ready to go for that last piece, and that'll be all the money we have, so that's, and you can see in that memo what this project is for. So, it was nice to only get three, and having them all basically ask for the money, and it will be able to give that out. One last thing, I would like to turn over to Phil for recycling, we've been giving you some updates on, you know, releasing recycling and communicating what we're at on that.
Yeah, so last year, we started discussions with Kimball, our contract was up for renewal. Sent out a memo to council at the end of August of last year, talking about the opportunity to switch to bi-weekly recycling in an effort to prevent a price increase and actually see a price decrease for residents. And that was based on facts provided by Kimball, that only 62% of residents put out their recycling weekly, and of that 62%, nearly half aren't fully utilized, we're talking like half, three-quarters of a bin. So, with that, we put out, after the memo went out to council, we put out a public poll just to see what the response would be from residents, and we had 493 responses. We also put this out amongst our boards, commissions, anyone that's been through Citizens Academy, any email address that we had. So, the number was higher than 493, but I'm just talking about general public. Of that, 72% of respondents either supported or neutral to the change moving to bi-weekly. 72%, same number, indicated that it would have little to no impact on their household. We remind residents that if they are, and I've already had phone calls on this, if they are a frequent recycle user, there is a drop-off location behind Bueller's Mill Town that accepts it at any point in time. The big yellow, I believe they're yellow, they typically are through the solid waste district, but you can drop that off there at any time. And with switching to this, we, the, the rate for users will drop down to $17 a month, saving money. And for residents that want to know, well, how am I going to keep up on my recycling? I'm not going to give the Joel response, I'm going to give the response that I've been working with, with GIS. We have a map, it's, the map is currently embedded on the website, that you can go to your address and see which week. It's separated, so whatever trash day that you have, that is still going to remain your recycling day, but it's going to be separated into week one or week two. So, on the map, you'll see where your address is, and it'll say week one or week two. On top of that, you are going, and we kind of have it finalized today, we're still working out the kinks, using a lot of addresses just to see if there's any issues with it, but you'll be able to input your address, and it'll give you what your specific recycling day is all the way out for a year and a half, and we will continue to grow that as, you know, as time goes. That way, it continues to populate for years down the line, but I figured 18 months for right now is a good start, that way you could start, because everyone's going to ask, when's my recycling day? We're going to push them to the website to say, I mean, heck, if you call me, I'll look it up for you, but if you go to the website, you put in your address, you'll get every single list of when your recycling day is for the next 18 months and further on. Try to make it as accessible to residents as possible. We will push this out on social media as soon as that database is complete. I didn't want to push too much out too soon to get too many questions until it was ready. It's a lot of, it's a lot of numbers, a lot of charts. Thank you, Andre. Thank you, Terry from GIS, for putting up with my incessant questions, because I've been running the wringer on this, but I just wanted to give an update that that will start July 1st. And the Joel response is, when in doubt, put it out. They just may not pick it up, you can put it out the next week. But if you have further questions, we'll push you to our website, we'll make sure it's easily accessible, or you can just call me, I'd be happy to answer your questions. So, thank you.
When's the launch date?
July 1st.
Okay.
So, anyone that is a June 30th, Monday pickup, you will still, and that includes me too, so, you know, you'll, you'll still get your pickup June, you know, that first day, but starting that Tuesday, that's when bi-weekly recycling starts, so thank you.
Okay, we have just a quick review of the agenda. We have three items of unfinished business, all on third reading. The first is annual tax budget, Mr. Abernathy had his public hearing on that before the last meeting. The second is rezoning application for the Weaver Custom Homes project on Burbank Road, and the public hearing on that was held two meetings ago. I will once again note that the Planning Commission held a hearing on May 1st and voted unanimously to recommend approval of that application. And the third item is an application for the renewal and expansion of the door program, and I believe that's probably why we have Manche representatives and Chamber of Commerce representatives here, or leadership here, I shouldn't say representatives. There are three items of new business, and all are budgeted. The Bishop Street Station would respectfully request that council consider passage of all three matters tonight. Because Sid Charter calls for a summer recess, the alternative is to have a special meeting in a week or two for the purpose of taking care of those items, and we're certainly willing to do that if council is so inclined. There's, Joel spent some time talking about the state budget that's happening, and there's something else going on at the state level that I want to spend just a few minutes talking about, and again, my apologies again for extending your evening, but there's a lot of confusion over this among, I'd say throughout the state, and this is, I guess, maybe one opportunity I have to try to clarify this a little bit, maybe not so much for council, but for anybody, you know, our huge listening public. So, we know they're out there waiting to hear on this, but, so there are two petitions for constitutional amendments that are being circulated in Ohio right now. If adopted, both would have a significant impact on city government, not only here in Worcester, but throughout the state. And so, if I could just give a little bit of background on that, procedurally, a petition must first have 1,000 signatures and then be submitted to the Ohio Attorney General's Office for approval as to form. Both of the two petitions that I am going to reference here have passed that hurdle just in the last two months, and they are now moved on to the second stage, and that's getting the amendments put on the Ohio ballot for action by the voting public in Ohio. To do that, the proponents must gather signatures from roughly 413,000 registered voters, voters from throughout the state of Ohio. That number representing 10% of the votes cast in the prior election for governor. And the signatures actually do need to come from throughout Ohio. There needs to be enough registered voters from at least half of Ohio's 88 counties to represent at least 5% of the votes cast for governor in that particular county in the previous election. So, it can't, they can't all be centered in just a handful of counties, it's got to be from throughout Ohio. So, that's where we're at now, they're out gathering signatures throughout the state. The first petition was certified by the AG's office in April, and it seeks to end the doctrine of qualified immunity in Ohio. Qualified immunity is a legal principle that shields governments and their employees from liability in civil lawsuits unless their actions violate clearly established statutory or constitutional rights. Perceived abuses in law enforcement are the driving force behind this petition, although the effect would extend far beyond law enforcement officers. It would not only affect prosecutors and judges, it would also expose public school teachers, coaches, and administrators, city to every one of our employees, every one of our Worcester City elected officials, over any incidents that occur in the workplace or within the scope of their employment. And it would extend liability to public entities that employ those individuals, cities, villages, townships, and school districts. As a result, the cost of insurance for all of these political subdivisions would increase exponentially, assuming that we can find insurance companies willing to insure the loss. So, that's out there. The second petition Joel alluded to earlier was certified by the Attorney General's Office on May 9th and calls for the abolishment of taxes on real property in Ohio. Everyone probably knows that public schools rely heavily on property taxes for support, receiving about 2/3 of that total, but the remaining 1/3 goes to the county, the city, as Joel mentioned, we receive about $3.4 million currently, and the public library and the mental health board. So, those entities would all be affected by, by this loss of revenue. And the petition makes no provision for the replacement of those revenues, you know, where are that money supposed to come from? It just says you can't do it anymore from property tax, which leaves sales tax, income tax, user fees, you know, the, the scope is fairly limited. Nor does it make any attempt to account for the effect that this would have on local and statewide efforts that we're making to attract and retain young people in the community. So, the bottom line is, I'm not going to make an argument either way on the petitions themselves or the amendments, I would just suggest that people do their research before signing any petition, and that they consider the unintended consequences, that they may follow enactment of any proposed constitutional amendment. So, after having put you through that, I do have two things that I'm going to end with on a bright note. As I said, we're about to go on a two-week, two-month summer recess, and in order to send you into that with something on hand, we had some leftovers from Kids' Day, that you're all welcome to take one and pass it along.
Am I allowed to look, or just grab?
They're all the same.
Oh, they're all the same, okay.
It's not like lottery tickets. A set of high-quality sunglasses with City of Worcester logos on them that didn't make their way out. The second thing I want to share is real quick, and this, I just- quick, and this, I just got this five minutes, I think, before we came down here. This is from, this is a letter to Scott Boyes at the hospital. I got CC'd on it from a longtime Worcester resident I've known a long time. And I was completely unaware of all this. But on May 30, he was at Health Point at 6:00 in the morning and was on the treadmill and had a cardiac arrest. And he had three people from Health Point there immediately. Gave him CPR until he was ready for the, for the, the AED. Got that going, had a squad there, got him to the hospital, and he is now back home and recovering. And he just can't say enough nice things about Worcester Community Hospital and about the squad, both the Worcester Community Hospital employees at Health Point and at the hospital and our squad. And again, I, I had a chance to email him back real quickly, and I said, I appreciate him sharing this information. I said, you know, as council members and elected officials, we all, we hear a fair share of complaints, which is part of the job description. So, but it's nice to be able to share the, the success stories, too, and this is certainly one of them. So with that, I apologize for taking up so much of your time. But I guess I do got to stop now.
Now you're good.
With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. President.
All right, thank you. A lot of good information there, especially the, these initiatives coming down from the state related to property tax and other, other legal issues. Those are all exceptionally serious for us, so we'll see where that goes.
By the way, what my option was, I was trying to look up, there is a second drop-off location out at the OARDC. It's on Selby Road, and you have to go kind of back behind the building. But there's about 15 to 18 of those big yellow bins. So if you're out in that, if you're on the south side of Worcester, you can go out to the OARDC. Again, it's off of Selby Road, there are signs out there. So we do have a second drop-off location.
Thank you.
Certainly. We have no petitions this evening. We do have communications from the public related to some of our legislation, specifically ordinance 2025-10. Ms. Waller, if you want to step to the podium and let us know your thoughts, please.
Yes, thank you. My name is Shannon Waller. I'm the executive director of Main Street Worcester, and our office is at least at the west, the city, I confirm, it's helpful. We were one of the organizations that helped bring DORA to downtown Worcester. This was in response to the pandemic of 2020. The Chamber of Commerce was the leader in that, in that push, and we worked closely with the city of Worcester and the rest of our tours in that area, the Worcester Police Department, to really put the legislation through our local filter to see if it would be a good thing. And we put a lot of safeguards in place in case anything bad happened. And we had a wonderful response when we did initiate it. It really helped out the restaurants. It helped a lot of them survive the pandemic restrictions. We ended up having no problems that I've ever learned of that were directly related to implementing DORA. It just seemed to bring a nice, more walkable vibe. It vibed nicely with the Main Street music that we had. And ever since then, it's been a positive impact on the community. In fact, I did some research in the Greater Ohio Policy Center, which is a nonpartisan think tank, says Doras have created a unique opportunity for communities large and small throughout Ohio. In active, with the goal of boosting local businesses and economic growth, Doras are helping to generate foot traffic and town centers, are creating thriving social hubs that benefit local economies, and are having a revitalizing effect on communities. So we want to continue that. That's why we've asked for the expansion of both the footprint and the hours that the DORA is in place. And we fully support the legislation that we have. We're actually seeing as a success story for other communities. There have been at least four other communities that have approached me, and I think Samira as well, to say, hey, we see that the Doras would be great for Worcester. We want to do it as well. Tell us about your experience. Tell us how we can follow in your footsteps. Ashland was one of them. I know there were several others in the Cleveland area, too, that came forward and wanted to know about our success story. So I encourage you to approve, excuse me, approve this renewal of it with the expansions that we haven't requested. And with that, I will see any questions you might have about the program. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Zimberly.
I'm Samira Zimberly, President and CEO with the Worcester Chamber of Commerce. Thank you for your time tonight. This is something, like Shannon said, that we started back in 2020 with the impact of the pandemic. And one thing that I'll note is, during the past nearly five years now, crazy, the restaurants have come to us asking for the expanded hours. There's a lot of people, especially during the summertime, that travel to Worcester on vacation or visiting family and friends. And the weekdays not starting till 4 o'clock, they've actually had to turn down a lot of business. So that's something that kind of started the, the hours of them wanting to have it start earlier in the day. So that kind of came from the establishments themselves requesting that. It's, we've had it on the weekends earlier in the day, and we haven't had any issues with that. That's something we talked to the police department about. They've been great. And so that's what started the earlier in the daytime. And then back in 2020, we did have just some concerns as we were starting it, wondering if there would be any problems. And so the map kind of started as this just very strict area. And so as we've kind of realized and walked through that path, understanding that we haven't had any issues, that's what kind of led to the expansion of the map as well. So, and I want to thank Phil. He's been great in helping with this process, as he's had some experience with that in the past in other communities. So just appreciate your, your time and energy as, as we work through this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We have no committee reports. We have no public hearings. We'll move on to unfinished business. First item, Resolution 2025-39, sounds third reading. We introduce by Mr. Abernathy after Ms. Hamilton reads it for us.
Resolution number 2025-39, a resolution providing for the annual tax budget for fiscal year beginning January 1, 2026.
Mr. Abernathy, the floor is yours.
All righty. We've already had a public hearing, two readings. Mr. Dordia, anything else you want to add to the tax budget?
Just that you'll be seeing a, legislation coming from the budget commission, ironically, for us to approve our inside mileage when it comes our way. You'll see that in, obviously, September, I believe.
Okay. Anybody on council have any additional questions for Mr. Dordia? Hearing none. Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Ms. Hamilton, please call the role on the adoption.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Husey?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Okay. Motion is approved. Next item, ordinance 2025-09, also third reading. Ms. Warden will be taking this on in light of Ms. Knappik's absence. But Ms. Hamilton, please read it for us.
Ordinance number 2025-09, an ordinance amending Part 11 zoning of the codified ordinances of the city of Worcester, Ohio to rezone land to PD planned development for property located on the west side of Burbank Road.
Ms. Warden, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So this is a request to rezone 18 acres located to the west side of Burbank Road, behind Northview Alliance Church, and between Worcester High School and Bueller's Milltown. Currently, it is zoned R1 and R4, which are suburban, single-family residential and multifamily residential zonings respectively. This would be rezoned to PD or planned development. It comes with unanimous recommendation from the Planning Commission, and the surrounding properties seem to coincide with this mix. It's a commercial, community, and residential zoning at the time, or at this time. This change in zoning would allow for a developer, a local developer, Weaver Custom Homes, to proceed with plans to build an 84-unit development consisting of single and multifamily structures, a clubhouse, and a recreation area. As was stated earlier, council did have a public hearing about this back in earlier May, in May, I believe. And there were no comments from the public at that time. We've had over a month to review this request and to seek any additional information if necessary. And we've seen several reports over the past year or two stating that the lack of, of housing is a real issue in our community. So I think we're really fortunate to have a local developer like Weaver, who's willing to be able to invest in our community and, you know, put forth projects like this that are needed. And not to call him out, but Mr. Stutzman is in the audience this evening. So I'm sure if anybody has any questions before we vote on this, I'm sure he'd be happy to oblige.
Yeah, Mr. Stutzman, I can't seem to find it here. What was the price point you guys were looking at for some of these?
That would be my question.
Houses and townhouses?
They're not premium, they're mid-range, and if it was lightened to get there, depending what all it would cost.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, Scott?
I don't really have a question so much as Weaver's been an outstanding partner in our community for many years. And I know planned developments is sometimes the best way to go, but it does put a burden of requirements on the developer. They have to maintain the streets and take care of a lot of those kinds of situations. So I appreciate the, the effort that you guys are putting forth and look forward to seeing what you guys create.
All right. If there's nothing further, I make a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Warden. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Abernathy. Ms. Hamilton, please call the role on the adoption.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Husey?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Sorry it took us so long.
Thank you.
All right. Next item, ordinance 2025-10, also third reading. Well, this will also again be introduced by Ms. Warden. But first, Ms. Hamilton, please read it for us.
Ordinance number 2025-10, an ordinance approving an application for the renewal and expansion of the designated outdoor refreshment area in the city of Worcester, Ohio.
Ms. Warden, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So, okay, we've gone over this a little bit, but I just wanted to be clear on it, because it is something that I think we won't revisit for five more years. So every five years, the city is required to reevaluate our DORA program, and that is either to cancel, continue, or to make adjustments. In the five years since DORA became active in Worcester, we've seen an increase in patrons in our downtown businesses and events. And as Ms. Waller stated earlier, it definitely was economic assistance for our restaurants that were, you know, hindered by some of the COVID stipulations that were, that were in place. Main Street and the Worcester Area Chamber of Commerce give their full recommendations to not only continue, but to expand the DORA boundaries and extend the hours to 10 a.m. to 11 p.m. seven days a week. Patrons of DORA can purchase an alcoholic beverage in a designated DORA cup from an authorized location. I believe there's 20 authorized permit holders at this time, and they can walk around downtown with their DORA, within the DORA boundaries, which are indicated by signs that are posted around town. Basically the state, you cannot bring alcohol beyond this point. The expanded boundaries will extend west past TJ's to include the Chamber of Commerce building, east past JFB to Pittsburgh Avenue, north along Liberty Street to include the old jail, and south along Liberty Street to just south of Henry Street. I believe, I can't, I can't recall if I asked Mr. or Assistant Chief Rotolo, or if it was Mr. Abernathy at the last meeting. One of us asked Worcester Police if, if they had any objections to this. And whether it was you or, or Mr. Hall, who was here earlier, stated that no, it hadn't, it hadn't caused any issues thus far. And so we appreciate having that recommendation from the police department as well. Yeah. So I have nothing further. Are there any questions from anyone on council? All right, I'll make a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Warden. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Abernathy. Ms. Hamilton, please call the role on the adoption.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Husey?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
All right. Motion is adopted. Move on to new business. Resolution 2025-44. As
the mayor had previously mentioned, this is a budgeted item. Will be introduced by Mr. Malta. But first, Ms. Hamilton, please read it for us.
Resolution number 2025-44, a resolution authorizing the expenditure of additional funds for the purchase of parts and supplies for utility infrastructure and allowing for immediate enactment.
Ms. Malta, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So Mr. Fritz is here with me tonight, if there's any questions. But we seem to go through this quite frequently. We're exceeding our 75,000. This first part is parts and supplies, and we're doing a lot at both the treatment plant and the water plant, and we need some more supplies. I don't know if anyone has any questions, but the overall is exceeding the 75,000.
Are we having more breaks and repairs, or is just the materials are costing more and the changing the?
There is, there's added material cost inflation that kind of gets us every year with these things. But we've also ordered some additional stuff that's kind of beyond normal, DNC, repair plants, and those kinds of things. There were a couple valve replacements at the wastewater plant, large air valves, and we've had a couple of things at the water plant that we're replacing as part of the high-duty pump rebuild. So there were just a couple oddball 16-inch size things that got thrown in there that pushed us over the 75,000 that DNC usually has to, to work with there. So they were the quickest and easiest way to get the finest supplier to have these things available. So we use them, but unfortunately, it's, it's been a pushover that, that's 75,000.
Thank you. There are no more questions. And I don't need to suspend the rules, so I would like to move to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Malta. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Meyer. Ms. Hamilton, please call the role on the adoption.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Husey?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
All right. Motion is approved. Next item, Resolution 2025-45, again, budgeted item, again by Mr. Malta. But first, Ms. Hamilton.
Resolution number 2025-45, a resolution authorizing the expenditure of additional funds for services from Galco Industrial Electronics and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Malta, the floor is yours.
Thank you. And again, we're exceeding, this one's a little higher. However, it is due to the VFDs or variable function drives. There are states here that are over 10 years old. We're having some operational issues. And if we don't do this, I guess we could shut down our air variation and really cause some stink going on.
Nobody wants that.
No, no. I think we've, over the years, had some problems and smelled the southern portion of Worcester, and it seems to be much better overall. So I don't think we want to revisit that.
Not in the summer.
No.
Other manufacturers and other, other vendors, we asked for quotes. One of the drives that we were purchasing as part of this, it was actually included in the, the project that's ongoing. It's the number six VFD for number six blower, which is a new blower. But VFDs for blowers one through four have been, having problems. They're getting older, and they're overeating. And in the summertime, it's especially bad, to the point where we were concerned that, you know, by fall four, we go out at the same time, we're going to have problems. So in looking for a vendor that had fourteen times low cost, we selected ABD drives, and Galco is the best place to buy those from. They actually did supply the two, three VFDs for the longer research station that was just finished up. So we kind of got to go through the process of starting those up and getting the program and all those kinds of things. So their technical support was very good. Their tech- So their technical support was very good, their technicians were very good, and their costs were the best we could. So.
I have a question, if I could. Forgive my ignorance on this, but so you said that one through four, fans one through four, yeah, that those are all having some issues and in need of replacement? Will these all be replaced at the same exact time? The reason I'm asking is I think, you probably know where this is going, like they're all gonna need replaced again at the same exact time?
Yes, they're all put in at the same time.
Okay, so it's just a cycle?
Since 2014. So when we first started converting the vertical loop reactors to standard duration tanks, those were the first four that went in. They all went in at one time, and I believe they're not, they're all failing at the same time.
Okay. I was gonna say, is there a way we could stagger those, just, you know?
We could, but then we're gonna, we're gonna have to live with basically keeping failed drives in service.
Sure.
And if you can't rely on them, they're, they're not new.
So we're gonna have a period of time with stink?
What's that?
We're gonna have a short period of time with stink?
No, no, we're trying to avoid all of that. We've got plenty of capacity down there, especially with the two new ones. So it's not a question of having enough air. We've got, we've got plenty of blowers, we've got plenty of equipment. It's just some of it's basically beyond its expiration date. So with this, we'll have basically six relatively new blowers. The one is a year old, but the other five will be new at this point in time. We're hoping to get a little better life out of these. Ten years is kind of, it's not the best, which is kind of, we didn't go back to that manufacturer.
Okay.
So we've gotten away from those guys, and we've gone over to a manufacturer, and hopefully, you know, these will, these will get stretched out a little further. So we won't be back there in ten years.
Thank you.
Any other questions tonight? I would move to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Malta, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Abernathy. Ms. Hamilton, please call the role on the adoption.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Husey?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Okay, we can buy the parts. All right, Resolution 2025-46 will be introduced by Mr. Abernathy. It is again a budgeted item. And before that, Ms. Hamilton, please read it for us.
Resolution number 2025-46, a resolution authorizing grants for economic development purposes and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Abernathy, the floor is yours.
All right, we do have two of the, and I think we're confirming, there was only three applicants, correct?
Correct.
Up here for approval. Mr. Tursky, can you, can you tell me, how in-depth is the application to apply for these, these grants?
So the applicant has to submit a budget, all of their records of financials, to show that they have the capacity to make matching funds. Because the idea to make the dollars go further, there's a matching proponent to it. It's not explicitly expressed, but typically it's 50%. As you'll see, that the two recommendations before you are 50% of what they ask. This allows the funding to be diversified further to as many applicants as we can get out. In their application process, they are to express that their project will achieve the goal of promoting economic development within the city of Worcester, specifically how it will benefit the city of Worcester residents and taxpayers while promoting initiatives highlighted in the City of Worcester Comprehensive Plan. Economic development may be defined as the creation or retention of existing basic sector jobs or businesses, property and capital reinvestment within the comprehensive plan's focused areas, or infrastructure that supports an increase in visitor and overnight stays within the city of Worcester. These initiatives may be accomplished through retail development, industrial development, or tourism promotion. allocations of funds is attended exclusively for projects emphasizing a clear and demarcation from operational expenses, inventory, or personnel costs. So the idea behind the bed tax funding is these applicants drive more people to the community, which in turn, in, in theory, stay at our hotels, which is where these funds originate from. Because we have what's called a bed tax on any of our lodging around town. So the more people that populate those, the more tax revenue the city will get in, and then we can disperse more out.
Okay. And we're essentially, we are looking to fund 100% of the applicants. So there's not a hidden applicant that's being left out.
No.
Okay.
Was the, when you say that there's 50% of what was asked for, did they ask for the full amount and rewarding 50%? Or did, or was the request for the 50%?
They asked for more than the 50%. So we brought in-
So you guys made the decisions?
We brought in each applicant, based on their budget, based on their matching, in order to make the funds go across three applicants. Each applicant said that they would be able to match 50%, which is what we essentially had.
So the original application, though, was not for these amounts?
No.
Okay.
For a higher amount.
Okay. My only, my only point was last year, when this was brought before us, we, I pointed out that city council had no input, no review. We didn't see the applications. You know, I'm not suggesting that we might have funded the Alice Noble 100% and the county fair, you know, 10%. But councils had no input. We've never seen any of these applications. And then they come before us to approve it. It's under $75,000. You wouldn't need to have us approve it. But last year, when we asked to see them, again, this year, it's right before us at the last meeting, and we've still not seen anything.
So that, just to say, that's why we sent the memo early on?
I still haven't seen the applications that we asked to see last year.
Right, so we sent the memo.
And you guys made all the decisions on who you were gonna give money to, and now you just want us to rubber stamp it like last time?
No, we sent, we submitted this in May 30th, knowing that we were coming up on it, so then we probably wouldn't be able to get here until probably this meeting to try to provide information. So we summarized what those were. Once we sent that out, nobody, nobody asked us any more questions. We didn't get any requests from council for any additional information. Nobody asked us to see the applications or anything like that. Everybody said, here's the three applicants, very specific what we got, here's what they're asking for, and we want to give away 100% of the funds. So we sent that out, and we assumed, once we sent the memo, that that was, that was sufficient information. We assumed that based on not getting any response back. So we assumed we were good moving forward and provided enough information for when we made a, make a decision.
You guys picked.
Public record and, and they're available to anybody. It's only available to council. So if anybody's got any inquiries on this.
Did you invite council to any of the meetings you had with the applicants?
Pardon me?
Did you invite council to any of the meetings you had with these applicants?
Would that be a public meeting that we would have had to advertise, open up to the public?
Not if you only invited one or two.
How are we gonna cherry pick which one or two?
Public health and leisure. Chairman would probably be a big part of that, since they were a big part of making this happen.
Might not Mr. Abernathy as well.
That'd be too.
We have, we can do that over the next couple months.
You can do it next year.
We took-
You just, we just wanna pay the winners and-
Councilman Myers, we took the feedback you provided last year, and we provided more. You had the opportunity to request it from us, and we didn't receive anything. So politely, I would say, we tried to meet your expectations that you provided to us last year. I mean, I don't think-
What you sent was what you'd already reviewed and proposed. Not, not any input before that, like the process is what I'm saying.
That's fair, but if you had questions, you could have asked, instead of asking at this meeting. I don't normally get agitated by this, but we fulfilled your request, giving you the opportunity to ask questions. You did not. So therefore-
It was already decided and put out there before you asked us for it.
You have my phone number to call me. You could have asked. Anyone could have asked. Councilman Abernathy was the only one that reached out and asked.
Very well.
I would like to say, I kind of remember in the beginning of this, maybe last year, that at least a couple of members of council just said, and because I don't think that, I could be wrong, I never know what Mr. Myers, where you're going with this, but I don't think that any of us would have tried to hinder what decision was made. I think that we agree that these are all valid and very worthy organizations to receive these funds. One thing that, I mean, I think we probably, as a council, would like to hear, maybe not, we don't need to hear it every single year, but seeing as how it hasn't occurred yet, it would be nice to maybe just hear a brief presentation from the new applicants. We know, we hear from the chamber, and we hear from Main Street, and, you know, those are continuous. They're pretty much just green lighted, I think, at this point, because they do bring in so much money. But it would be in the future, nice for us to be able just to hear, like, what, what some of these programs are doing, and, because that might not be something that we're super in tune with, just going forward.
Yeah, it's good feedback. We'll bring forth next year.
If we have time to do that this summer, I mean, there's, you go, council does not have to act on this tonight. And we know that there's gonna be one more coming forward in September. So if council doesn't want to act on this one tonight, that's certainly your prerogative. And if, this was our proposal, council free to reject it, modify it. This is, we've had that our, the administration side at this point. So it's now council hand, and you can decide what, you know, what timeframe you're gonna do this in, and what steps you wanna take in doing this.
Just for the record, I reached out to both of the applicants that are before you to attend tonight. Both are on previous commitments. One has a board meeting, one is out of state. So I do have letters written here that I was gonna plan to read for your behalf, for the record.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I, just out of curiosity sake, it would be nice to sometimes hear. I'm personally aware of both of these organizations that are on our desk this evening, but I know, maybe not everybody is. And it would, I would think that the representatives of these organizations might wanna come and, you know, kind of talk up what they're doing and what their plans are and speak to that. So perhaps there is an opportunity over the summer, or, or in the fall, when they're all three together. I don't, I don't care. But, but yeah, I think that, on a softer side of what Mr. Myers is saying, I do think that that was something we talked about, is maybe having presentations from those folks at some point.
That was part of the conversation when we initiated the other 50% of bed tax fund going to this application process.
Correct.
I didn't know you weren't here, Phil. But that was an in-depth part of, you know, council wanted to be involved in-
So is council wanna, does council wanna be the one negotiating on what percentage of a application is funded? Is that what you're saying? I'm just trying to make it clear.
We'd like to be involved in the process, and we haven't been.
So is that a yes?
I won't be here, dude. Doesn't matter. It's all on you. It'll be, I mean, I won't be here next year. Just, it's, and you knew this when we talked at the thin blue line before you were mayor. You said, this is gonna become a problem if we get 10 applicants. That was two years ago.
We haven't, because the eligibility requirements that he read is sort of an expanded version of the eligibility, which is in our, I think it's in our ordinance that said, you know, basically what types of projects are eligible. So I think that naturally limits, I'm guessing.
The applicants. Well, I support these two projects as well. I'm not saying I don't.
Yeah. And for my two cents, I would say I prefer the city to the administration to handle how it's divvied out. I know that me, I have involvement in some of these organizations. So I would have there be a conflict of interest, and probably many of us could say the same thing about some of the applicants. So just to hear, just to hear it update, I mean, just from a curiosity standpoint, would be beneficial, I think.
Yeah, just a little more open process. I don't think you did a poor job. I think you guys did a great job of picking how the money was distributed, making it go as far as possible. I, my hat's off, I mean, you guys did a lot of work and spent a lot of time. We'd just like to have been involved in the process. I think you did a great job. Just would like to have been involved, that's all.
No doubt.
And again, I won't be here next year, be the other councilmen, members that you'll have to bring into the loop. Thanks. So my question to my fellow councilmembers, it's a budget item. Do we want to vote on it?
I would be willing to.
Yeah, I think we can approve these, and I think we've had our say and-
Another question.
Okay, Mr. Husey?
Yeah, just as one of the councilmembers who wasn't here when this was reworked, how we do the bed tax, what is the process here? Are we soliciting entities in town for applications? Or how does that look?
So for, I don't know, a decade or more, we would, unfortunately, Main Street and-
They just laughed.
We would, we would, we would do, same thing every year, we'd do an advertisement. Application bed tax are open. Longer ago than that, 2015, 20 years ago, they were competing applications, and it got a little messy, because they've become the council, and they'd basically fight over the funds. The neighborhood, the chamber, and Main Street, Wayne County Convention Bureau.
WDC.
And those kind of things. And so I know there was, the council at the time expressed, they don't want to be involved in that kind of stuff. Can we make this a little easier? So what happened was those, those entities that get a designated amount right now, they did a combined application. And they came in and said, here's the application, and we will each accept, we pre-agreed to get this amount of money, this percentage. They all got a little bit different percentage. So that's what happened. So then for several years, all you had were those entities, and nobody else submitted. It was sort of perceived out in the community that it was their money, and that they really wanted to get it. So people like the Highlight Opera and other entities just didn't, never submitted. They didn't feel like they had, they probably had a chance. So a couple of years ago, let's make that a year, a year, year or two years ago, that's when we redid, we proposed that we take the bed tax money and take the first portion of it, and just designate those entities that are sort of our partners, you know, the chamber, Main Street, WDC, Wayne County Convention, Business Bureau. We looked at their historic percentage that they usually got, and we said, how about, would it base it on a percentage of bed tax that was a little bit more than what they typically got? So council passed a two-year, at that time, ordinance for two years. All those entities, you'll get this designated amount, just percentage of the bed tax, which is a little more than what they typically got. So they didn't lose any money. That left over a little bit of bed tax that we used to just put back into the general fund, or into what we said, why don't we just designate basically the rest of that?
For breaks.
I can't remember the percentage. But 78,000, it's a, it's a smaller percentage. It's like 10% or-
No, it's 50%. It's roughly different than 50.
We used to get about 300,000 in bed tax. So whatever percentage, 78,000 dollars. After we did the percentages for all the designated. So then we had this extra amount, 75, 80,000, that we said, let's put that towards that purpose of those competitive applications that meet the criteria that Bill had. And so for two years now, we've gotten three or four here, all of which have gotten, I think last year, we had like four applicants, and then, so in order to spread it, everybody, we got like 25, 30%. This year, it worked out, everybody gave 50%. So so far, in the last two years, everybody supplied, has gotten funded by a similar percentage.
So one more question. The outstanding applicant, that we have not closed that agreement?
No, they submitted for more money than was available.
Correct.
And the issue there is the Highlight Opera is a separate entity from the College of Worcester, but they share facilities. So they have to get the approval from the college, you know, for the project, you know, facility improvement, and also, you know, for their matching, matching part of that.
But if we were to approve this tonight, where does that leave that applicant?
Right where they are. We're just waiting on them to finalize. Their officials get back to us and confirm.
In September, we would vote on them separately.
Yeah.
Okay.
We didn't want to-
That's what I'm missing. That's all I'm missing. They're not listed. Okay, so they're not?
Correct.
It's a way to prevent holding up the other two from-
Okay, gotcha.
Yep.
That answers my question.
Yeah, Phil?
If I may, if everyone's okay, can I read the, what was submitted on both? Okay, I'll start with the Wayne County Agricultural Society, Wayne County Fair. Secretary Jared Snell expressed his, he's sorry, he couldn't make it. They have a board meeting tonight. The Wayne County Agricultural Society is honored to receive funding to help with the completion of another phase of the replacement of the exterior fence. The fence has already been replaced, the fence that has already been replaced has enhanced the appearance to visitors that enter Worcester from the south. The next phase will enhance the appearance from the west. We are proud to be recipients of this funding. As everyone, I'm sure, has seen, they replaced that 100-year-old galvanized, painted, whatever fence with barbed wire on it with the nice split rail that is going around the side. So it's a nice addition. The second letter is from Rob Wells, the arena director at Alice Noble Ice Arena. Dear councilmembers of the Worcester City Council, on behalf of the Alice Noble Ice Arena, I would like to extend our sincere gratitude for your generous support through the grant provided for our lobby HVAC recipient project. Your investment is important, is an important upgrade, and will significantly improve the comfort and overall experience for the many community members and visitors who use our facility year round. The Alice Noble- The Alice Noble, Alice Noble Ice Arena is proud to serve as a wide, is proud to serve a wide and diverse population, from young skaters and club teams to adult leagues and recreational skaters. Beyond its value as a community hub for healthy activity and youth development, the arena is also a key driver of local economic activity. Each year, we host numerous tournaments, competitions, and events that draw thousands of visitors to Worcester. These events support local hotels, restaurants, retail businesses, and service providers, generating upwards of five million dollars in direct and indirect economic impact for the city and the surrounding region. Your support for our HVAC upgrade helps us maintain a high-quality, welcoming environment that encourages this continued usage and economic benefit. We deeply appreciate the city council's commitment to strengthening local organizations and enhancing the quality of life in Worcester. Thank you once again for your generous support and shared vision for a vibrant, thriving community, with appreciation, Rob Wells. Thank you.
And I will say, the reason they submitted those is because we did ask them to be here tonight to talk about their organizations and projects. Unfortunately, both had conflicts, that's the only reason they were not here to do what we asked, and we asked, could you please write something?
All right, do we have anything else? Hearing none, motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Abernathy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Jose. Ms. Hamilton, please call the role on the adoption.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Jose?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Okay. We'll move on to miscellaneous, we have one person that signed up, Mr. Barnett.
Hey, good evening, everybody. I'd like to review the last ten months of me opposing the peanut. Number one, student and pedestrian safety will be affected without traffic lights. Number two, the beginning and end of a school day will be total chaos. At the beginning, all the traffic heading north on Burbank, going to high school, will have the right of way, and therefore the traffic coming up Winkler will be backed up, the traffic heading south on Burbank will also be backed up. At the end of the school day, there will be one way to go, at the end of Old Man, that's right into the peanut. And you gotta remember, we've got a lot of new drivers coming to the high school, it's gonna be chaos. Number three, response time for emergency vehicles will be affected. The quickest and most effective way from point A to B is a straight line. This is not a dangerous intersection. Which roundabouts are being constructed to save lives? The accidents that have occurred here, no one has ever been transported to the hospital, or no car has been towed because of damage from the accident. Number five, it will affect property values for my, my neighbors and myself without a traffic light to help us get in and out of our driveways. At times, it will be almost impossible to do this. Number six, it's a waste of millions of our dollars. It's our dollars. Number seven, I hope everyone in this room has a happy and safe summer. See you in September.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We'll start with Mr. Gaffey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wasn't in town this weekend, but just thankful to hear that everything went off while on Saturday. Thankful for all the organization and, you know, police department's involvement in that. Also saw in one of the memos Joel sent out, that CIU had a seizure of fentanyl and meth, and there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes that I think a lot of us aren't aware of, and so just wanted to call a little attention to that, and I think anytime we can see drugs come off the streets and some of that stuff get shut down here in our community, that's a good thing. So thank you for that, to the police department. Other than that, everybody have a great summer, and that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Warden?
Well, we haven't seen her in a long time, I just want to wish Ms. Knappick well. Hopefully she's recovering and, and that we can see her in September. Happy summer, everybody, that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Malta?
Thank you. I'd like to thank everyone in attendance and viewing, we do have a large viewing audience, as stated earlier tonight, and we do appreciate that. It's our duty to you to do the best we can. Happy summer.
All right, thank you. Mr. Myers?
I'd like to thank you for the update for the Christmas run pool, Joel, I did see that at the end of your memo the other day, thank you very much. Look forward to having that done next spring. I know that, that, we're probably gonna be putting a little time crunch on that contractor, because they're probably chomping at the bit to get started with at least the demo part, so, but appreciate the update, so. Everybody have a good summer, thanks.
Mr. Jose?
Yes, I hope as the temperatures climb outside and across the streets of the country, that everybody stays safe and smart. Glad to see that we did that here locally over the past weekend, and give Bill Belcher[1778.08]